We will call our Coffee County Board of Education work session for March 28th to order. Thank you all for being here this evening. And with that, we will ask Dr. Banks to say our work indications.
Sure. Let us pray. Dear precious Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come and gather here this afternoon. We thank you Father God for all of our participants here tonight. Thank you for our board members. Thank you for our superintendent. Thank you for everyone that's affiliated with the Coffee County School System, all stakeholders that we have within our district. We thank God for them. And I pray now, Father God, that you will be with the children that we're to lead day in and day out. I pray, Father God, that you can touch their minds, let them have good feasible thoughts of doing great things, Father God. And I ask, Father God, that you protect them with your armor. Let them know that you will always be with them, you're always by our side, and you give us the strength and the power to do things in a righteous manner. And I pray, Father God, that we know the adversary is always out there seeking whom he may devour. But we pray that he will not touch any of our students in this area and neighboring areas as well. Let us continue to strive for the advancement of our lives and be on one accord as we impact student achievement right here in Coffee County. This is our prayer in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. We ask in Jesus Christ's most holy and righteous name. Amen.
Amen.
Board members, you've all been given a copy of the agenda to review. Minutes to look over. Is it time to make a motion to accept the agenda?
I believe we accept the agenda as presented. Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor? Very good. Presenting.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight, and we've got a pretty lengthy agenda, so we're going to go ahead and jump right in and get started. Minutes from the meetings last month. Are there any questions, board members? Any amendments we need to make? All right. If it pleases, the board will place this on the consent agenda for the meeting following this work session. Financial reports. We have our financial report presented to the board for the month ending February 28th, '19. First document, you'll find the February financials, the overall report. Ms. Young, do you want to update the board on this document?
Yes, sir. This document shows our fund equity as of February 28, 2019. You showed, we showed that we began the year July 1, 2018, with $12,409,352.95. So at February 28, we are at $17,422,171.42. As we begin our closing process, we will see those expenditures increase there as we start planning for our accruals, monthly accruals for July and August. So that's...
We have the detailed, I'm going to jump to that, number three, the detailed report. That can move to three, the detailed report. That's all right. Any questions about that? If there's no questions, we can move to the comparison report, February comparison. Notice the month over last year gives us an idea of how we compare. It's seen consistent growth. Much better shape than we were four years ago. Are there any questions about that document, board members? All right. If there's no questions about that, then we'll move on to our East SLOSS, number four. And you'll notice we had a good, good February. So we were really excited about that. People were out shopping, spending money in February, obviously, so...
But they didn't spend it in January.
I know it. They were holding off, weren't they, to see what the new year brings? Are there any questions about that? If it pleases, the board will place this on the consent agenda for the regular meeting at 7:30. Next item on the agenda is adoption of a bond resolution. Of course, we know we passed the bond, the East SLOSS back in November. So gracious to our voters who voted yes, and we appreciate their support, and so we moved on into the process of developing our construction budget and work session. Put a lot of work into that. Thank you, board members, for everything you've done to get us to this point tonight. We're going to ask the board to approve a bond resolution. We have representatives here from Raymond James, and we've got Bill Camp, Alan McCann. Thank y'all for being here. John Fennell from the Bond Law Firm, so thank y'all for being here. Mr. Cottinham, I know you've worked hard on this, and Ms. Young, you've worked hard on it. So at this point, I'm going to give the floor to our visitors. If you guys want to come up and tell us about the bond package that we're going to ask the board to approve tonight. We're all fighting to get some stuff.
I'll start it, and then I will hand it probably pretty quickly to Bill Camp. I'm John Fennell, glad to be here this evening. I think this is the third or maybe fourth SLOSS bond issue we've worked with y'all on, and I'm glad to be back in Coffee County. As you'll remember, the voters renewed the East SLOSS in November for, it should be, I guess, SLOSS five. At that time, up to $20 million of bonds were authorized in conjunction with the Educational Sales Tax, and the board has decided to move forward on around $8 million of projects to finance with bonds. And so the bonds are actually sold today, and Bill can go through the numbers with you and explain what the pricing was, and then afterwards, I can explain to you kind of the legal side and what that entails, approval of resolutions, and then I can tell you a little bit more about what will happen between now and closing. But I do want to reiterate what Dr. Lee said. Thank you, especially to Tracy, for all her hard work. I don't know if any of y'all have seen the officials, our preliminary official statement that was put together that Raymond James used today to sell the bonds, but this is a lot of work, and it's a lot of financial and statistical information about the school system, and thank you again to y'all's staff for getting this put together so easily in a quick timeframe. So with that, I'll hand it over to Bill, and then I'm happy to answer any questions about what needs to be approved and what the next steps are.
I'm not going to brag on y'all, and then brag on Ms. Young specifically, but that fund balance, having that kind of money allows y'all to have some choices that a lot of school districts don't. Going back to what Mr. Fennell said about how much bonds the voters authorize y'all to borrow, and you're borrowing less than half, so just, that's a, that's a good pat on the back for y'all. Again, that allows you to kind of be more tactical about how much you borrow and when you borrow, so... And then also, a lot of work went into a lot of aspects of this thing, but I wanted, a very good story about Ms. Young. We have a chance, we, to review your rating report, and there was a certain thing, some comments that we were able to look for facts and information, but you, we had a good conversation with the rating analysts about making an adjustment to one of the sentences in the rating report. And this lady is detailed, and I enjoy working with her, and y'all got a, y'all got a good finance person, so, and we appreciate being able to work with y'all, again. On page two, I included this just as a picture for y'all to see kind of what the market looks like, what are rates doing. You might have been hearing over the last year or two that rates come up in the short end, but historically, rates are still pretty low. That red curve shows you our current AAA tax exempt scale, and then that dark curve shows you an average for the last 25 years. So rates are still lower than historical. That's a positive thing. And in the last couple of weeks, we've seen rates really start to come back down a good bit. There's some economic uncertainty, and believe it or not, that's, as y'all know, bad for your brokerage accounts, but it's a good situation to be in when you're borrowing money. Investors are nervous, so they go buy bonds and other safer investments. On page three, we've got a summary here showing you your ratings. You're an A1 credit all by yourself. You're an AA1 based on the state's INTERCEPT program. Our bonds are going to be paid back during the term of your five-year SLOSS. And we've got different rates in different years, but your average rate is just under 1.75 percent. That's the yield, that's the number we're going to report to the IRS. Page four. This is a pricing summary, and it shows you the prices and the yields for each of the five principal payments. And then down at the bottom, so you'll see our yield of 158.21 down to 184.25. So when we average those out, that's where we come up to that, just under 175. Down at the bottom of the page, we're comparing your bonds to the current AAA scale. And so generally, over the last few months, we've been running it assuming 25 basis points over AAA. And you can see that even on the longer maturities, we're plus 20, and in short, nine basis points over AAA scale. That's our report card to show you not only have rates gone down, but our pricing is tighter to that AAA scale. That's a positive thing. Now, page five, this shows you all of your money. So the bond issued is $7,635,000, sold at a little bit greater than face value. You get $8 million deposited to the construction fund. That next item, capitalized interest, we have to have a way to pay interest until this SLOSS kicks in, the next SLOSS. And then these are the costs associated with the bond issue. Now, page six, page six shows you the debt service that you're going to pay back on the bonds. Our highest year is $1,764,000. I'm going to go to the next page, and you'll see, based on no growth, y'all averaged a little, a little under 1.5 percent during this last five years of SLOSS. But at no growth in the SLOSS, you're collecting $5,008,000. That's based on the last 12 checks, which included the March check, which just got posted yesterday. So you've got $4 million over and above each year from debt service. In other words, SLOSS is going to be able to pay debt service and have excess proceeds for additional capital needs every year. And then page eight, there's a few more things that need to happen. Commissioners will have a meeting on the first, will post our final offer and document, and eventually be able to close, and that closing date is when we deposit money into your construction fund, and that'll happen on the 10th. And again, we, I tried to go through that pretty quick. I'm happy to answer any questions y'all might have, and again, we appreciate the opportunity to work for you again. And I'll let the attorneys explain what we're asking you to, to bless and approve from the document side.
So to make all of this official, we have three resolutions that the board needs to approve tonight, and I think y'all can do that collectively, probably just in one motion, one action. But to break it down, the bond resolution is the main document. That locks in the interest rates, locks in the bonds that will be issued, and provides for their repayment from the Educational Sales Tax. So that's the main document that authorizes the issuance of the bonds. The second resolution is what we call the INTERCEPT resolution. Bill mentioned to you that you have a rating on the bonds, a rating for the school district, but also an INTERCEPT rating. In order to have that higher rating, that AA1 rating for Moody's, to have that INTERCEPT rating, you have to participate in that INTERCEPT program. And so the INTERCEPT resolution says that you're going to participate on that program. What that means is that for some reason, you do not have enough money on hand in the debt service account to make a payment, and you do not deposit money there, that the state of Georgia will actually INTERCEPT money and pay the bond holders. That program's been in existence for probably 15 years now. Every school district in the state uses it because you get that higher credit rating. And to my knowledge, I don't think it's ever been called upon, because everyone obviously makes those payments before the state would INTERCEPT the money. And then the third resolution is a resolution requesting that the Board of Commissioners levy a tax in the event one was ever needed to pay the debt service on the bonds. Again, that's not anticipated ever being needed because y'all got plenty of coverage from the Educational Sales Tax to pay the debt service, but since these are general obligation bonds, it's required under the Constitution that that resolution be approved by the Board of Commissioners. It's similar to what y'all do on an annual basis with y'all's MNO, where you set the millage, but then the county actually levies that on y'all's behalf because they have the tax assessor, they have the tax commissioner, they're the ones that collect taxes on your behalf. So if for some reason the sales tax vanished and you're not able to pay debt service on the bonds, it's a mechanism where the county would levy a tax on y'all's behalf to pay the bond holders. The fourth document that was in y'all's packages is the bond purchase agreement. The bond resolution authorizes the chair to sign that agreement. What it is, is a contract between the Board of Education and Raymond James that essentially says y'all are going to hold up your end of the deal, and they're going to hold up their end of the deal until the closing date on April the 10th. And so as Bill indicated, we do have a few more steps to go through in the next two weeks, closing papers, accounting meeting next week, publishing the final official statement, but then after that, when the bonds are closed on April the 10th, that's when the money, the $8 million, will be deposited into y'all's account and will be available to be drawn down and used for y'all's construction purposes. Any questions for me?
Madam Chair, any board members? Questions? So the total amount of interest, if everything goes like this is laid out there, is 1.49, page six, something like that?
That's correct. Yeah, on page six of the handout, it summarizes everything, so yes, the total interest over the life of the debt is just over $1 million.
And you are getting more proceeds. If you wanted to just compare the $8 million versus the payback, it's $1,044,000. In other words, by selling the bonds at greater than face value, you're getting more than the principal amount deposited in the construction fund. That makes sense?
Which is back on...
The sources and uses page. On page five, the one right before that. Just a comparison.
Page four?
If you look at page five and page six, the deposit to the construction fund is eight, and then we're paying back, principal and interest is $9,044,000. Your statement is correct, it's just there's, there's more premium that you're getting in addition to just the principal.
And that's the nature of markets. Y'all may know this, but the reason they were sold at a premium is really to get a different coupon amount on that bond, but they're going to pay you more. So for $100 worth of bonds, they're really paying you about $110, $120.
Well, that's what I said about page four, you get maturity value, you didn't get dollar time.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You're right. Yes, sir. It's, now, I'll tell you why this is going on. So rates are one something, and most folks think in the next five years, rates will go up. I'm one of them, but I've been wrong for a while. If you sell an investor a 5 percent coupon and rates go up, that security is more liquid. If rates do go up, I would sell that easier than I could a two coupon or a one and a half. And so to get that liquidity, they're willing to pay you more upfront for that bond, and you're indifferent. Payback is, debt service is debt service, but you care about proceeds and you care about yield mainly.
So that premium amount, you could apply that to the debt. Would it be fair to say that...
You're, you're getting it just as if it was, you're, you're getting that just like it was principal.
Yeah.
It's all your money.
And this is based on, actually, a certain amount of red lieu out of SLOSS, and we'll start collecting that. If SLOSS is doing better than that, and we pay more back, and at the time, is that going to bring me, or is it going to be pretty much a set in stone, this is what you're going to pay on this day?
You are, your debt service is fixed. That's right. You, you know from now on what those payments are.
But it doesn't benefit paying anything back early, it's just going to be on a surfer's schedule.
Well, correct. If you, if you had, you have the ability to put some money into an escrow and defeat debt early if you wanted to.
I'm not going to save myself any interest.
Well, you could potentially make what the bond yield is.
Arbitrate.
Yeah, that's right. Well, you can't arbitrate, but you could match it.
You could make, you could break you.
That's a good question, but...
I just want, we got now towards the end, and we owe $3 billion back, and we have it sitting there, we paid it off, and we saved ourselves some interest, but you're saying that's just...
You will, there are investments today, remember, in borrowing taxes now. Short-term money, just one that I'm looking at periodically, George Fund one pays $240. So you're, you're able to make a little bit more than the bonds are costing you, and in the future, if rates went up and you had some excess SLOSS, you could have an escrow account that probably was making that bond yield.
I was just maybe talking about just paying back. I mean, I see what you're saying, but that wasn't really what else, I get, I get what you're saying.
But that's, that's a, that's a good question. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I think it's better where we started.
Thank you very much.
Yes, we were asking that that be placed on the consent agenda, and promoted the regular monthly meeting, the board approves that, so thank you.
All right. All of those documents?
Yes, all of those will be drafted into the consent agenda for approval by the board for that meeting. Any other questions? We will move on, and we appreciate your time, gentlemen. Thank y'all for coming down and coming over. Out of state travel, we have the group from Eastside that will be going to the Jacksonville Zoo on April 4th. If it pleases, the board will place that on the consent agenda. Surplus property, we have some items from Nicholas Elementary School that we're asking to do surplus. These items will be placed on Gov. Deals and sold on Gov. Deals. Our maintenance director did want to be sure to point out that some of the, the items that are in the pictures, some of those items may not actually be sold. My question is, there's some leechers there that I noticed that some of those might not be sold. Some old cafeteria equipment taking up space.
We've put all this stuff on, I mean, we get pretty good, I mean, pick the mine and stuff pretty well, it's kind of easy.
Everything's settled. Someone who brings one of those things on the market.
I've looked on there before, and I just know, you know, just, I don't know.
We've had people actually buying all the... Six or eight hours to buy a lot of projectors.
Surplus property. Any questions? School improvement funding. I have Ms. Kim Miller here, and Pam Smith are here to talk about the school improvement grant that the Career Academy has received. If you all want to come forward and update the board on this, school improvement funding.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. We, for several years now, Wiregrass's graduation rate has been below 67 percent, and there are lists from, for school improvement, and Wiregrass has been identified as a conference of support school. And coming with that identification is $75,000 to support the school improvement plan. They receive support from Okinoki RISA. Georgia Department of Education has partnered with the RISA's to help provide that support for, to improve grad rate. They also receive some support from State Department of School Improvement folks. And then I'm the district representative to provide district support, and we have a support plan from the district that we're responsible for to make sure that things improve at Wiregrass, specifically grad rate, because that's why we're on the list. And some of the first directions that we've taken are tracking grad rate. Today, they had a whole day spent of goal-setting with students, and Ms. Smith shared with me earlier that that was an eye-opening experience for the kids to truly see their data and start to set those goals, and they will continue this process in the fall. Today, I know it's late in the year, but today was really to train the teachers to be able to continue that process so that children take ownership of what they're doing in school. Attendance, let'siles, academics, it's all on there. We printed their SLDS history reports, and that's what they use to set those goals. And so everything was right there in front of the student, and it was kind of a aha moment, that, oh my goodness, I missed so many days, I didn't realize I missed so many days. But anyway, I need you to approve, Tracy, that we accept the $75,000 from the state to support. This is Title I school improvement funds, but it's separate from the normal Title I school allocation that they get. This is in addition to what they normally get. This is in addition to what they normally get, so these are referred to as Title I School Improvement Ten Zero Three A money, and it is, as I say, it's in addition, they will continue to get their Title I allocation just like they have in the past, this is just additional funds. Any questions?
What is our graduation rate?
Fifty-eight point sixteen, just what it's the last two years. But I will say, Ms. Smith has been tracking and looking and trying to identify those students, and she looks to have a much higher graduation rate this next year, whenever, in the fall, it'll come out in November, we'll find out, and either, we're hoping that we will be on the list based on the data that we do there and so forth.
Would it be fair, would it be fair to say that that cohort, the graduation rate, if we did not have that facility available to them and the programming available, would have been lower than that through our regular, based on their cohort? I mean...
The school system graduation rate this past year was eighty-two percent, I think Coffey High School's graduation rate was eighty-seven percent.
I guess what I'm saying is, if these students didn't have the programming available, that they would've kind of checked out already.
The district...
Got a greater rate than what?
Probably so, and the dynamics of Wiregrass is different than it was when it began.
See, with this cohort that ended with the fifty-eight percent graduation rate started, they were over here in the old building, and the alternative school was in the building at that time, and when the first year of the Career Academy, we did not code the alternative students in with the Career Academy, then the second year, because the alternative and the Career Academy were together on the same campus, we started coding the alternative school students, all of the alternative school students into the Career Academy because they were in the same building. And so, there was also a group of ninth graders who had not been successful at ninth grade, had been held back in ninth grade for a couple of years. We had some seventeen, eighteen-year-old ninth graders that had not earned the credit to go on to high school, so they were moved over here to do a program to try to help them get on to the high school, and those students were counted in that graduation rate also. So at that time, there was a group of students who moved through, who, I hate to say it, a good many of them didn't graduate, and those numbers are reflected in this four-year graduation rate that deemed y'all this past year. Is that fair to say, Pam?
That's correct.
All right.
We will have our first true graduation rate, as Wiregrass Regional Council Career Academy has a hold, did not take two.
Well, when we first started this deal, and I know the dynamics have changed at Career Academy since our original vision of it, but I mean, we didn't have an actual figure, but, you know, we talked about, hey, we can get twenty-five percent of these kids graduating, and we're sitting at fifty-eight and hoping to move forward, that was my point, was, you know, I think we're on the right track, I mean...
Well, we've heard great things from the support that we've been getting in the school, they're just there to make it better, so we think great things are gonna come out of this, even though we're on the list, and nobody wants to be on the list.
Well, that's my point, is that, you know, we're on the list, but look, we're well ahead where I thought we would be at in just a few years. I mean, obviously, we won't continue to move forward, but fifty-eight percent from what I thought, where I thought we would be at a few years ago, that's, that's pretty good.
And it will increase. We're going up from here. Thank y'all.
Thank you. May two thousand nineteen meeting date, we have to adjust our meeting date, there was a problem with the way we advertised it, I put on the list that we would meet one day, and it was not reflected correctly, and so, we need to get that clarified, and in thinking about resetting that date, these dates have been approved by the board, so to make sure we're advertising correctly and that we've got it correctly stated when that date would be, I'm asking the board to approve this May meeting instead of the Thursday, May ninth, to Tuesday, May seventh.
Why does it matter if we went back and approved something saying May the ninth as opposed to seven? Now, I don't care either way, I'm just asking.
We had originally, Robin, do you recall exactly what the problem was in that advertisement?
I think we had it, we had it said as May ninth on a Thursday, and then there was some discussion at the board meeting, and we changed it to May seventh. The advertised date said May ninth, second Tuesday, and May ninth is on a Thursday. So we just have to clarify...
Yes, that was the date we would like to have the meeting, would be the seventh.
The date was wrong, and the statement of what day of the month that was...
Was wrong.
Which, yeah, it was just confusing when you read it, so...
Yeah. So, instead of just, I started to just redo it and reset it out, but I thought, no, that takes a board vote really to set it.
Because we'd originally, my notes were, we'd originally talked about moving it to the sixteenth, which was the third Thursday, but that, there was some conflicts there.
That was...
Too close, we had to get it before fifteen. We had to get it in before fifteen, for personnel, so...
That's right. So if it pleases the board, we'd like to advertise May seventh, which is the first Tuesday of the month. All right. Policies, we've got several policies on the agenda, the first is descriptor code IHD, honor rolls, and this deals with students who are in the ninth grade and do not take the required numbers of honors classes. The way we've been operating is if they don't take those honors classes as ninth graders, then they cannot qualify to be an honor graduate. By making this change to the policy, this would allow a child who didn't necessarily take the required number of honor classes in ninth grade, if they decide, hey, I can't do that work, that they could, they could then decide in tenth grade or eleventh grade to take the required honors classes and become an honor graduate. So this kind of opens the door to those kids who, for whatever reason, didn't get on the honors track as ninth graders, they could have the opportunity, although I would state it would be very challenging, because they would have to take some rigorous courses to get back into that honors track, but they could do it, and this would open the door for that to happen. Are there any questions about that? The high school, we've got Dr. Cummings here, his group has worked closely with this, vetted this. There's no questions, and we'll ask the board to approve this policy revision at the regular monthly meeting. The next policy, JCDAA, deals with student tobacco use. We want to add a statement on vaping to include e-cigarette or other vaping devices. I think it's been in the news a lot lately about the dangers of vaping and how addictive it's become for young people, so we want to add including e-cigarette or other vaping devices in our tobacco use policy. Also, policy GAN, which deals with employee tobacco use, we are a tobacco-free system. We would add prohibition, include smoking, the use of electronic, e-cigarette, or other vaping device products. Are there any questions about that? If that pleases the board, we'll include those policy changes on the board meeting for approval. We also have policy DJEAC, purchasing or credit card use. Our auditors pointed out that we needed to have credit slash debit cards in our policy, so that if we have a debit card that we can use to purchase, that's included in our policy. So, this is a change to be in compliance for our auditors. If it pleases the board, we'll place all those amended policies on the agenda to be approved at the regular board meeting. I do want to add that we had some discussion, there was a question at the last meeting about Zell Miller Scholars, and could we make that a requirement to be the vow or the sow, the valedictorian and salutatorian? I did confer with the GSBA policy expert, Marlene, and she deferred to Phil Artley, and he said we could include that, they didn't see a legal problem including that requirement. Now, I've talked with the high school staff, they met about this issue and had some valid questions about timing of testing and whether or not those recognitions would come in before a certain point in the school year to be able to include that as part of the process. They had a lot of questions. Dr. Cummings, is that correct?
Yes, yes, that is, this question of the national testing date set by, you know, college board, and so, we wouldn't have that information in a timely manner. Now, if the board chooses to cut off at some point, they come back and be done, but, you know, we just wanted to kind of weigh the benefit of that in terms of some students not taking the test at certain times. So then it becomes a question of when did you take the test, and not based on your academic ability, and so, that's some questions, there's some things that has to be worked out. It can be worked out, but that's just something we'd have to consider the benefit, the consequences plus the unintended consequences, and it's just gonna take some study and research.
We really don't have a hard recommendation for the board at this time. I talked with Dr. Cummings about having a prepared statement that we could present to the board as a possible insertion at a later date, but after they raised some legitimate questions, he had several of his chief folks in there in the meeting, they, we feel like we'd better get our ducks in a row a little more before we come with a recommendation like that or amendment, but we will continue to look at it and see.
Can I play the suggestion, what Tom areas, I don't know if I've completely wrapped my mind around this.
Right, so the, you familiar with the situation that's been brought to our attention about someone possibly fraudulently...
Yeah.
...patting their grades through taking AP coursework, not completing AP tests, but getting a grade for the coursework through online in virtual classroom. And several years ago, if y'all recall, the Zell Miller Scholarship situation, there were some smaller districts, the state legislature stepped in and said, basically, they didn't have anyone qualified for the Zell Miller Scholarship based on SAT score and grade point average requirements, but they, the school system there did have a valedictorian and salutatorian, and so, the state legislature opened it up to allowing a valedictorian or salutatorian named would earn a Zell Miller Scholarship even if they didn't meet the Zell Miller requirements. My question is, if we hybridize that here locally, that it would kind of override that situation that's been brought to our attention?
I guess my question is, just, as big a school system as we are, is that ever gonna be a problem? I understand that the smaller school system has only got a hundred students, but I just,
I thought it would be a way that we would combat the issue that was a concern to people about folks simply taking online coursework. Now, we have since then, and actually before, we've capped out the amount of coursework that will count for that grade point average anyway, right?
That's right.
So it may, I was just curious if it was even allowed, if it's ever allowed to set that.
Even with that, I would think they were still making good grades on that, even if they didn't do the test, even in the coursework, I would assume they would have good grades to be able to get up to the valedictorian or salutatorian status anyway.
Yeah.
If they did, it wouldn't matter, somebody else would be ahead in another place.
Well, what we talked about, this would just ensure that they had taken the most regular coursework, and they had the highest SATs that they were... We had thirty-one last year who qualified for that.
That's what I'm saying, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, I'm just saying I'm not, I guess I'm not really seeing what...
Yeah.
I didn't really think that would be something we would run into, maybe.
No, no, I think, no, I don't think we run into it either, so I saw it as another level of security toward the padding of scores based on simply the number, simply the volume...
Or we will have, it's just, okay.
Yeah, no, I just...
We'll continue to have conversations with our folks at the high school, and we can revisit it.
And I know that, I know we've got a, you know, we're still looking into that situation that was, that was alleged, and I just thought this might be a piece of it that would be something to look at, if we couldn't reach a resolution on either course security or testing security, that this might be a high enough bar that the students that... Anyway, that was all.
All right.
But nothing I wanted to put into place immediately, it was more, I wanted to hear from the high school what their concerns were, and it may have come back from the State Department, and we couldn't even do that, you know, it was like, but...
We're exploring. All right, the next item is the GSBA exemplary board application. The board has to approve this application before it can be submitted, and we have reviewed the requirements. Arrived at the fact that we will have completed the requirements for it by the time the documentation is required. So we are asking the board to approve an application for GSBA exemplary board. Robin, is that the information that we have collected? And I appreciate y'all filling out those questionnaires that you have to fill out, thank you. That is the next item on the board agenda, is the self-assessment. Oh, yes, oh, all right, yeah, on the agenda, we had, we included that the GSBA exemplary board application that we're asking the board to submit, the recognition for that would be at the Georgia School Board Association Summer Conference, Thursday, June sixth, the board would be recognized, but then also, that morning at the conference, the opening session of the Georgia School Board Association Conference, the Coffey High School Show Choir, and actually, they'll be performing Friday, June seventh, at the conference. Our Coffey High Show Choir will be performing in front of, there'll probably be six hundred, seven hundred board members from across the state, it's a big conference, it's a big deal for our show choir to be presenting, so they'll be given the opening musical rendition for the GSBA conference, so we're real proud of our Coffey High School Show Choir. And then the next item, we have the self-assessment that the board members have completed, and this gives us guidance for how we can better serve the board and better serve Coffey County. So, we'll continue to study the results from this survey that our board members have completed, and a couple of community members have completed. I know that Mr. Davis-Hugh has completed this assessment before, haven't you, so thank you for doing that. Soft docs, next item on the agenda, and I will say this, I placed on here that we were asking the board to approve this for the April twenty-fifth consent agenda, but in talking with Ms. Yon, and considering our technology department and training and such that would go along with this, I am going to ask the board to consider approving this tonight. We already use soft docs, and this is a, a, right now, it's a server-based software package that we use in our business department and in our human resources department. This would be moving to a virtual platform where we wouldn't have to house it on our servers, and it's gonna require some training that we need to go ahead and get scheduled, servers, and it's going to require some training that we need to go ahead and schedule, so I'm going to defer to Ms. Yon and Dr. Newell to, to describe the, the package, and Ms. Clayton, if there's anything you need to add from an HR standpoint, but we'll turn it over to y'all to describe what soft docs is and why we're asking the board to allow us to purchase this package.
We have been a customer of soft docs since 2011, and currently, what they do for us is, there's three products, DocuServe, and what that does, that prints our accounts payable checks, our payroll checks, our W2s, and also our purchase orders. Then, once it's printed, it is an electronic file that we can see online, that's the DocuScan portion. Then we use a component called DocuField. This is where our employee self-service portal is, our electronic contracts for our human resource department, and our employee forms, such as our purchase requisitions for online, and federal forms like W4s, and Georgia ones, the employee can go online and update this information, okay? This is a screenshot of our webpage where the employee goes to the self-service portal, and they can log in, and when they log in, this is what, what they see, and they can go online here, and they can print their pay stubs, they can print W2s, they can print the contract, direct deposit information, so, and then also, the administrators of each school can go online here and begin purchasing, make a purchase through a requisition on here, and it's streamlined through the administration.
That's the system we're using right now. That consists of all those applications running on one server here in our district. That server is approaching nine years old, it is in need of update, Windows Server Operating System on it is no longer supported, so regardless of which solution we go, we've either got to move it to the cloud, as this proposal suggests, or we've got to upgrade our server here, which is not going to be a cheap option as well. The new solution is conversion of all of those platforms to what the company calls their E-tree in the cloud solution. Everything would migrate off of our servers, out onto their servers, migrate all of our documents, all the forms, and would add onboarding for new hires. Ms. Clayton may be able to shed a little light on that.
It would help us quite a bit, there is so much information we have to gather, and we put forms out on the web, but basically, the new hires have to print those out and fill them out longhand, so this would be more efficient, and it would route to the folks that need to see the information, and then it would be stored. We desperately need this for Tracy's department in mind, to keep things going and get away from the paper and to be more efficient.
We're still moving a lot of paper into human resource and finance, and this will help us reduce some of that paper we're having to shuffle. Is this resource? No, it's not.
And he just told you it's going to have to replace the server there?
And this is compatible with our accounting software, so once the new hire completes all of the paperwork online, it can be uploaded into our payroll, so make it, you know, transition smoother there. And as you see here, several schools, districts in the state of Georgia are currently using soft docs.
The counties that are in purple have the new E-tree system, the ones that are in orange, as we are, so have everything locally based on servers.
So the annual subscription, the first year is 34,500, this is moving everything to the cloud, then we'll have a one-time fee for training, professional services, and migrating all our forms and everything to the new, the cloud. And then each year, we would pay, you know, a subscription that would, you know, increase approximately 3%.
We find most of our services go up 45% annually, is what we have seen with our other subscriptions. Another plus for this system, security, we don't have to worry about keeping the data secure, that's a big concern now, anytime we're dealing with purchasing data, employee data. They handle security, they handle software upgrades, they handle backups, all of that is taken off of our hands. This is also mobile-friendly, right now, we can use all the soft docs features on a mobile device, on a phone or on a tablet, but it is very awkward if you've ever had to approve a purchase requisition, it's very cumbersome. This is adaptive, it will, you'll get a mobile version if you're on a mobile device, and it's just, it's designed for the mobile workflows we currently don't have with our system.
All right, the, are there any questions?
Any questions?
Does this allow us to cut staff? You know, it, it could help us gain efficiencies in the office at some point down the road, I mean, down the road, I think, as we have to process less paper and such as that at some point, you know?
In our world, we're seeing a trade-off. As we move more and more services off our servers out into the cloud, we've got more devices to manage, so our job is expanding in one area. Thankfully, some of this is coming off our, our
Say y'all wouldn't have as much to do?
I'm going to say this takes some of the backend administrative workload off of us and lets us work on those 7,000-plus student devices we've got.
So, going back to what you originally stated, we're going to reach capacity on our servers, and we'll have to
Worst reason in the block, it's just
That's what I mean, I mean, it's, we'll, we'll have an expense one way or the other, either purchasing servers or purchasing service.
Right. And I'm guessing ballpark of server and software licenses, Microsoft charges you per processor and core now on their services, they're one cost, we're probably looking at about 70% of that cost if we posted it internally and they were still using the same older system, which they will probably stop supporting at some point. So, ultimately, we're going to end up having to do that.
Are y'all good with going ahead and placing this on the consent agenda for the regular meeting following this? 1920 student handbooks. We're presenting the board with the student handbooks tonight. We met with our principals two weeks ago, talked about revisions, we casted, going back if there were any revisions, we're changing stuff, we may, we're going to follow up with them. Dr. Banks is heading this up. Dr. Banks, you have anything to add?
Yes, I have some suggested revisions from Coffey High School and Coffey Middle School. There are not many revisions that they wanted to have implemented for next year, but I just wanted to hand you out, just a handout that I received from Ms. Anastasia Carter from the high school and Mr. Garrett Winters from Coffey Middle School. Every year, when it comes to the handbook and student behavior, you have uniqueness in every year that we put out things. I will say that, looking at this year and the things that we have endured this year with the handbook, I think we want, we might want to update some things pertaining to child pornography and some things on Snapchat going forward. Also, there has been an increase in usage of bathing materials at Coffey High School, sometimes on the bus, et cetera. So I think the middle school wanted to make a recommendation that bathing and smoking, cigarettes be placed at a level three infraction, that would give the school administrators an opportunity to suspend up to three to five days if they need to, based upon the situation. So I think those are some of the things that we're going to try to look at, but I would ask that you board will review everything in our handbook, the suggested revision that I just submitted to you, look at hopefully next month, any recommendations you have from now and in between that time, please, please let me know, or Dr. Lee, and we'll try to make it happen going forward. But I do know that some of the things pertaining to dress code, that can be an ongoing thing year by year, different sites have different things happening, but I think the culture of our times, we have to really strengthen some of the things that we're doing, but we, we do have a policy in place, basically, for everything that comes up, when you look at a level one through a level four infraction from students and the things that they, because they do and things that they should not do. So I do feel that with those revisions from the high school and the middle school, looking at elementary, basically, all the principals felt that if it's not broke, there's only going to be trying to fix anything. So I had one principal from the elementary level talk about maybe we need to put in a statement to parents about coming into the building, since we have offices on, on deck now at every school. We had a policy this past year that our principals submitted to the parents at the elementary level about not walking their kids down to the classes after that first week of school, and that kind of minimized some things. And the reason why we said that was because sometimes you may have a parent going in that really don't know, you really don't know the background, and that person could have been a child molester, that kind of thing, so we just wanted to actually minimize that action going into the buildings and, as a means to keep everybody as safe as possible within our school system. So that's basically it for now, but we will look at modifying everything, implementing things the way you have written before you right there, to make it better moving forward. But I will say, another ongoing concern at elementary has always been tardies in attendance. There's always been some type of problem there, and that's as we move up and progress up the ladder, these things continue at middle school and also at Coffey High School, and I think Dr. Cummins has some things that he wants to share about implementation of policy pertaining to tardies coming up on our agenda today. So these are things that we're working on, trying to make it better as we move forward. And I will always say, many things in the handbook, they're there for a reason, it's been accumulation of things through the years to address this concern or that concern as students change some of the things and dynamics that they engage in from day to day. They do a lot of plotting from time to time, but you will also see a suggestion from the high school that I got from this card, it's pertaining to earbuds and headphones. That's one concern, some were saying that you have these things, your ears are covered up, you can't hear what's going on, trying to make an announcement during the exchange or transition from one class to the next, some kids can hear, some kids can't because they have their ears covered up. So these are things that we need to address moving forward. That's all I have tonight. Any questions, any concerns, anything that we need to look at differently, please advise and as we move forward.
Any suggestions right now?
Yes, sir.
So is the elementary school suggestion that you referred to, is that
That's not a tax, that's not a tax
That's not a tax, so that's just still for conversation. And one elementary did that this past year, is that for more than
No, all elementary, all elementarys enforce that policy, that, or procedure that we put in place at the beginning of school. That was, that was basically kind of why.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Coastal Plains Education. We've been, we've talked about this initiative before. If you look in our strategic plan, you'll find strategic plan focus area two workforce and life, it's on page 11, and on page 11 in our strategic plan, you will find a goal there that deals with creating a night school option, it's in our strategic plan on, on page 11. Our goal is implement a night school option, and so we've researched different ways of delivering night school. This Coastal Plains Charter, high school was opened in Lounes County, in Camden County, in Vidalia City, Wayne County, Cockwood County, Scriven, Vidalia, Liberty, Long, Jeff Davis, Kandlar, and they've been having success there with this. Essentially, we would allow them to open the night school on the Career Academy campus between the hours of 3:30 and 9 o'clock, and Monday through Thursday. The cost to the school system will be $27,250 in July of 2019, and then in July of 2020, $27,250.
But after that, weren't they going to pay us some kind of
They're, they, I talked with their director this morning, actually, the superintendent is his title, they operate as a school system because they're recognized by the state as a school system. He said they would reimburse us $75,000 after year one, and then $75,000 after year two, and $75,000 a year moving forward. He said if their fund balance got great enough, that could even increase, that they would reimburse us for the use of the space and such as that. So it's, this program has been very successful in North Georgia for about 20 years, it's known as Mountain Ed up there, they have a similar program, it's recognized by the Department of Education. They started one in the middle of the state, it's called Foot Hills, and it's also recognized by the Department of Education, and now this will be in place in South Georgia, and we will be a participating school system.
Outside of the first, the cost of the first two years, we don't have any expense outside of providing
They would use our computers, Chan has already looked at our computers that we have over there, and they would use our computers. Pam has surveyed the space, I don't know if you have any comments, Pam, about the space?
I think we have adequate space.
And I think for 27,25, we would spend more than that trying to start up a night school, probably. And that's what these people are into business of. They'll employ our teachers part-time at night to work there, they limit the number of nights that they can work there, they don't want to burn our teachers out, so it will be part-time employment for around 50 of our employees who want some extra opportunity and earn some extra money.
How many kids would they be at least before you look at yet?
They look at 150 here. He told me at Lounes, they're currently up to 250 that are attending.
How are they funded?
They're funded through FTE, the students, if they leave us, then, and they enroll there, then they will draw the QBE funding from the state, so that's how, but they don't have the expenses, they don't have to run buses, they don't run, they don't have schools of their own, so they're drawing that QBE funding.
But they drop out of public school and start going there?
They'll be
They would pick up the FTE and we would lose them.
That's right, that's right. So this is really targeting those kids who are going to leave us.
But if they're dropping out, we lose them too.
Yes. I mean, do you have to have to start a night school?
They, they are hoping we will have around 150. I would think we'll probably start with 100, just guessing.
If you don't have 100, you may have 25.
They would cut back on their staff, they would cut back on their staff. In one of their locations, they did, in Long County, which Long is a very small community, Little Whist, they started out as a full site, and he told me they cut back to a satellite site. They have a satellite site in Jeff Davis, and they have, I think, two teachers and maybe one administrator there, and I think they're, they're serving around 40 students. So, but we're not, we're big enough with 43,000 people in Coffey County that we could sustain a full, full site.
And what's our cost?
$27,250 per
After they've been open a year, they go lie us some checks?
They're going to send us $75,000 back.
I guarantee they'll have a certain number of students, or, I mean, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
What if they only have 25 kids for that year, they still going
They, I, I, we probably wouldn't get $75,000, I wouldn't think.
Well, that's what they base them at.
Yeah. I would, I would think they're working off 150 students.
Some way
Places that have started it have all been successful and have all stuck with it. Like I said, this has been going on in North Georgia for over 20 years, Mountain Ed, I can remember years ago, they were talking about it, and so it's a, it's a real school that is getting real results.
What kind of contract do we have with them, I mean, five years from now?
We'll sign a one-year, it's a year-to-year, basically, intergovernmental agreement that we'll sign with them, and
So if this place is not going out, we won't four years from now?
We can put them out, actually, in the agreement, there's verbiage in there that's quite confusing because it states that if they will not do because it states that if they will not do anything to negatively impact the Coffey County schools, if they do, we can, basically, they can't be here. They can decide if we don't want them here, we can, we can...
I think it's a good deal, I like it, I'm just trying to make sure we can get them something, you know, I mean, on paper it looks pretty good.
So, we're asking the board to approve that tonight. And, and the communities, the systems that have, that have started this, they've seen their graduation rate go up, I mean, it's gonna go up.
Well, that's, I guess everybody's getting something out of this, they're getting FTE, all of our graduation rates goes up, kids getting education, and teachers get a little work on the side.
It's a win-win.
I just wanna say on paper it looks good, I, you know, if it works like that, hopefully it does.
All right. I would ask the board to place that on the consent agenda for vote at the regular meeting. Need to go separate. So we'll place that separate on the, yes ma'am. All right. Coffey High School Saturday School? Superintendent recommends Saturday School begin at Coffey High School on Saturday, March 30th, it's the day before my birthday. So, but anyways, we have been talking about Saturday School with the high school, I know we presented this or had discussions about it last month, and I met at the high school with Dr. Banks and Dr. Cummings and some of Dr. Cummings' staff, we spent an hour or two at the high school revisiting the plan, inserted most of the plan into the e-board for tonight's viewing. We added one minute between each class period to make sure that students could actually get to class. We tested that, we feel confident that even with a bathroom stop and wash of the hands, they should be able to get one, one class to the next anywhere on the campus. And keep in mind, those times have been in place for over 20 years.
How long do the ninth graders have to wait?
They have around 15 minutes, I think, and we got five high schools, one of that. The ninth grade, they have the band students who transition over from the high school, and they also have the choral students who transition over from the high school, and weightlifting students, and ROTC. So we have these different programs of students who go back and forth from Coffey High School on school buses to the ninth grade, and they've inserted that extra time in between the classes to allow for those transitions. And so I was there one day when they had their transition and the school bus pulled up to the front of the school, and those kids got off, and they just walked right into the village, beautiful, and they had plenty of time, and so, that's the main reason they extended the time in between classes to allow for those transitions. And then also, I think, they have a philosophy there on socialization that they feel like because it's outside and they get fresh air and they can get out in the sunshine for a few minutes, that they allow them to do that.
See, that's probably my problem with this, I mean, they got 15 minutes there, and I'm not saying they need 15 minutes, but the point is, we got five minutes at the high school.
Well, it'll be six minutes now.
Six minutes, five minutes, it's the same, you got to hump it, get from one side to the other, and I don't know who you have good people, y'all wanna see how long it's taking, but that just, to me, six minutes, just, it feels like to me, we're coming up with something to combat tardies, but maybe we're part of the problem with tardies, 'cause we're not giving them enough time to get where they gotta go. And if they're tardy because we're not giving them enough time, and then we make them go to Saturday School because they're tardy, that just doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
We trained them in the ninth grade to be tardy, they're not. You know, I just, I just still think that, you know, I mean...
Especially girls, you know, it might take a little less time for boys or men to use the bathroom versus girls, because sometimes monthly interrupts, and it might take a little longer for them to prepare themselves to get back, dress properly, to get back to class, so...
I just think if we're gonna be on that title of schedule, you know, we're probably creating part of our tardy problem. I just, you know, that's just my opinion. I mean, I think on this sheet right here in the student handbook, we've got a lot of stuff on tardies about what they're gonna do, and attention and this and that, and parent-teacher conference and, and different things, but, but when you go to the Saturday School, I, I'm just not, I mean, I like the idea, I do like the idea that the teachers have another tool to be able to, you know, get the kids to get on to class, but I just, I don't know, I'm just, I'll be honest with you, I'm just not crazy about it, I just think too many issues...
How has it been working, Dr. Cummings?
Well, it's working well, we, we, we had a thread of the old...
They would get there, well, they probably weren't sure.
It worked extremely well. Just to echo what Dr. Lees just talked about, it came, with Dr. Lees, Dr. Banks, Mr. Allen, you can get anywhere on that campus, even from the Ag Building, which is outside the main building all the way to the gym, within the six minutes, and with the restroom break. Now, the elementary, it's not elementary school, but the freshman campus uses 15 minutes between classes, they only got about 400, 475 students, we got 1,300 students. And 1,300 students with that much time, whether it's five minutes, six minutes, certain 15 minutes, that's a student management problem for us. So I, you know, my, you know, I strongly feel that we, you know, the quicker we can get them out of the hallway and in the class, I know they gotta use the bathroom, and in this issue, if a student has a specific problem, the teacher would the one, would be the one to record, the tardy administrator would be the one to assign to, to alternative students. If it's a female student, we got a female administrator, so obviously if they wouldn't feel comfortable talking to a male administrator, they would go to a female administrator, to hopefully, you know, force that concern. But this is just an effort, and this came from our teachers as a tool to help students get to class, because we do have those policies in place in the student handbook, but that is a long, long laundry list of issues and steps to get, get to where we'd like them to get to. And this is an effort to clean up, to clean up the process, to help train the students, as one of the board members mentioned, to be on time and get to where they need to get to be. One of the biggest issues, and I said it before, that we deal with all our business and industry, is that we're trying to teach our students to, that students need more soft skills, get to work on time, come to prepare, and this is just an effort in that direction is all, is all it is. But to ask how it works, it was working well, it was working great, there was a noticeable difference. I presented some of that, had a gold evidence at the last, at the last board meeting, I will be happy to provide that again, but I think it made a tremendous difference in our tardies, they call them high schools, when we had that, students wouldn't learn real quick, when they did not have that hanging out there, then they kinda drifted back, and so, again, won't say it'll answer every problem, but I think it's a step in that direction, and that's, that's kinda, you know, our position at this time.
What they, you say it was starting May, what?
It would be this Saturday.
This Saturday?
Well, let me just call it, that's kind of a quick turnaround, we could adjust that, 'cause if the board was to prove that, or they needed more discussion or whatever, that'd be a quick turnaround, so if the board did, you know, did approve that, we can adjust that time to give the parents more notice that this is something we're gonna implement and where we have to place.
That would be my only request, is to allow more communication time.
Yes, ma'am.
On the tardy number two, just if we could insert the word confirm, parent contact?
Well, that's helping with the kid involved, that's been tremendous, you know, that...
I mean, I just something that, you know, you just don't want that to come back and be he said, she said, or they said, he said, issue that...
Well, you have to be a little careful there, confirm, attempt to contact, 'cause you may leave a voicemail, you may send an email, you may put it kid involved and the parent not responding, that should not be on the, the teacher for attempt.
No, I just, what I'm saying is...
Well, see, I got a kid involved message, remind, I, I called and signed mine out, and I got a kid involved message saying he was out, so then I emailed back and told him that I knew I signed him out, and then I've got tardies every day, well, no, absences every day this week, they've missed classes, but it's been for the wrong stuff, he had a ballgame or something and they didn't get the list, so I've got something back every day this week to him.
I don't understand that, but I'm saying that if a parent, if a parent doesn't call back, I don't believe that to be a teacher.
Well, as I said, I responded back, but then I never got anything back, so I didn't even know if I could respect, were they even getting that's what I'm saying, then Dr. Lees says they were, 'cause I didn't know if they got, when I sent something back, I didn't know if that actually went to them or it was just a, kind of a no reply thing.
We're, we're cleaning that up with the, with the lag time between the students, when the coaches and sponsors turn in the essay form to get that, we're working to get that cleaned up, but it is good, great to know at least the calls are coming through again.
Well, and mine was a unique situation where he was on a couple of different things there that weren't getting, it wasn't, you know, it was, but my point was, yeah, I've got something every day on kid involved. My other question is this, we talked about this last time, and I still don't, and this is another big problem with my, my whole Saturday School deal, I still don't know how this is gonna work. The ones that we need to go there that's, that's repeatedly tardy, they're gonna say, well, I got a job Saturday, I can't come, well, I can't get there 'cause bus route doesn't run on Saturday, I mean, what are we gonna do with all those? Because that's gonna be an excuse for everybody.
Well, though, the students can rearrange and reschedule with administrative approval on the front end, don't just not show up, that, you know, that's what's in place now. If they do have an issue with family issues, some sort of work, but even with the work, part of the going to work is being on time at the work.
Oh, I know, I'm just saying, that's gonna be an excuse why they can't go to Saturday School, and then when one finds out that that's a valid excuse, they're all gonna have that excuse.
I, I didn't say that was a valid excuse, 'cause you got work.
We put in there, we put in there that they could have one rescheduling.
But what if they don't show at all, if they decide that, listen, I'm not going?
If they don't show at all, you know, and originally it was three days out of school, we adjusted that to one day out of school suspension, if they just decide and refuse to show, 'cause that, now that moves from just being a tardy to defiance, and just not...
And you say one day suspension?
Yes, ma'am.
You don't think a lot of them will just take them a day suspended?
One of the, one of the thing...
Worried about showing up in Saturday School?
Well, one of the things about doing it this late in the year, this will be a trial run, you can see.
And, and I think that the target, the kid you're talking about is probably the kid that doesn't really care a whole lot about their grades and stuff anyways, and so the target, target student is the student that really cares, and that is tempting...
They're probably the ones that showing up playing anyway, the one that really cares.
Well, but I think that that's been part of the problem, you've had, you've had the kids who, who you wouldn't expect to be tardy or tardy, 'cause the consequence, there's so many, you got the first con, first one, second one, third one, fourth one, fifth one, but if you put a consequence in there...
But you, those kids right there, though, you're gonna clean up right here in mandatory parent-teacher conference. If my, if you have to call me to school, 'cause my can't get on time, those are gonna clean up there anyway.
Well, I, I think it's important to understand that Dr. Cummings is, this is a teacher base, you know, this is something that teachers are asking for some...
I, I agree with the principal behind it, I do, I really do, I just, I just have, with the logistics of it, what's bothering me, I agree with the principal behind it all, all the way, I just, you know, I have reservations, how it's gonna work, and like I say, we're not creating a little bit of that with our, you know, short turnaround time there.
Well, we're gonna extend that a little bit to allow better communication, and I'm gonna echo Dr. Cummings' comment that this is an adult problem too in workplaces, so if we can start helping our children be more accountable at this early age, that will help every employer in the future. And thank you for those revisions and taking the time to do that.
Thank you.
Do we need to, do we need to leave?
If we have a consent, or we need to...
I'll put it on our server.
Do we need to leave with a start date?
Yeah, we'll amend the start date to...
Could be not this, not this Saturday, but following.
So that would be April 6th. Yep.
It's gonna be my birthday.
Oh, that's prom.
Yeah, that is.
Yeah, that's prom.
Even better.
There you go.
Why don't we wait till after spring break?
That'll be fine.
All right, after spring break.
That's a whole other system.
Come back ready.
What's Saturday School?
I will say that we had a meeting today at the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Authority with some, some local leaders, and they said that what the local industries and employers consistently tell us is they want our young people to show up on time and ready to work, and I think that's what this is, an attempt to teach our, our young people to be good workers, so...
So with that change in start date, this is on the consent agenda or second?
Second. All right. Thank you. Robin, did any audience members sign in? Executive session, I would ask the board that we move to executive session to discuss personnel and information that may be confidential, student information.
I have a motion to exit executive session. Motion second. Thank you. All right, I need a motion to exit executive session, please. Second, on time, is that, with that, we have exited executive session.